Okay, it's a minute past seven o'clock and. We're getting ready to leave the public hearing, we'll call it a order. And we're here to hear an application from Michael Hecker, seventy-one on Solar Road. And I've got my glasses, so. I'm going for most memorable in this year. Um, and okay, the public hearing will be held in person at community room at Town Hall, seventh school. And the applicant is seeking relief from a denial of his own permit by the inter-resoning agent. Specifically, the applicant was denied his own permit to construct a two-car garage intended for the storage of landscape equipment, a dump truck, an excavator attached to a dwelling and to an existing car garage that is proposed to be converted to a workspace. Presentation by the applicant, of course, with the comments and questions from all of us. So do you want to join me? You have the floor?
Sure. Um, now, the only thing that I'm really concerned about here is I was not aware of half of the stipulations and half of the correspondence that the lawyer said that I was facing. Uh, I was not seeing any sort of conversation with the lawyer. Uh, I wasn't given any sort of correspondence until it was put on the website uh, two weeks ago. Uh, so I didn't, I didn't know that I had to put in a full-blown zoning permit like, uh, an A-two, a whole new A-two. I thought I had to put in a proposed idea on top of my issue that I have for my property, which is still existing. Uh, I was told personally by the prior zoning agent that that would be okay for this part of the stage because you can feel it's necessary for the building permit to actually get all the A-two and, and the topography and all that stuff laid out. This is like five thousand dollars to get it all, you know? It just doesn't seem at this stage necessary, so to say. Uh. Another thing that I found was kind of overreading of the, uh, correspondence of what the lawyer stated was that the garage was a, let's see here. He was stating that it was a sixteen hundred fifty foot, square foot, first floor, uh, second floor. Well, seeing that it is not a living space on the second floor, it's attic. Acces are not counted as living space or as, um, square footage in the zoning laws. Uh, just as the same with my attic, my house is not. Uh, but my basement or second floor of my house, which is a living space, can be perceived that way. It is on the website, it's twenty-nine or thirty. So take advantage of this. You know, it, it, some people say it's twenty-nine or thirty, some people say my house is sixteen hundred and twenty-four. It really is based off how you take it. Uh, he, he thought saying that the garage was too big essentially for the property. Um, and I checked over and over and over and over again. Uh, I thought I saw it made in older publications of the zoning laws. But I couldn't find anything in the new twenty-twenty-three edition stating that having seventy, seventy percent or eighty percent or whatever of the existing, uh, principal property had to be that up to that square footage. Uh, if you could find that, that would be excellent. That I've been talking about, uh, talking with my, my designer about trying to get it under, obviously, that legal limit, so I wouldn't have a problem. Uh, but I would find it there.
Can you speak that again?
So, most, um, most towns have a square footage that you have to leave with under for an accessory building. We can't have like a four thousand square foot accessory building with a two thousand square foot house. Unless it's like a bar, particularly. And I thought I saw something, maybe it was a different town. Maybe it was from older publications stating it would have like seventy percent of the coverage. But I couldn't find anything in the new publications stating this. Um. You know, I've pulled that data much and tried to find the whole thing. I couldn't find it, so there shouldn't be an issue with that. Another issue is they're stating it's an accessory building. Part of the principal property is connected. So the building is connected by resides to my house. And also the existing garage is connected both altogether, which means all of it now part of the principal structure. No accessory building was in one of the property, nothing. Which would completely defeat that accessory building issue that the lake area has. Um. And I, I understand, you know, you're only allowed a two-car garage. That's why I'm removing the two-car garage that I have now, using it solely as like, you know, I have a lathe and welders, this kind of stuff, but you can't fit cars in all that junk that's right now outside in the little rain, kind of thing. Will be in that garage. I won't be able to fit cars there. It's, it's literally to help me keep my other house, which I'm sure nobody wants to see out in the middle of a garden or whatnot, happy. Being inside, we just had three dirt bikes stolen right down the road here. I don't want that stuff out of me, my property. You know, I have a lot, a lot of stuff outside. I really don't want that stuff stolen. Uh. So we're gonna keep it safe. With all the people, soon enough. Um. The property will increase in value, revenue, taxes will increase for you guys. Um, and all my neighbors don't mind if their properties are worth more because they're gonna have an age, so I'm gonna be about it. Uh. It's kind of what I have for now. Yeah. Waiting for everyone to be quiet.
Okay, uh. As far as the, uh, A-two survey is concerned, uh, you saw my email that, uh, I responded that in. Um, that what were presented, um, should be enough information for the board, if you mind me putting the board to a regular informed decision. And we can, we can bring that up right now if you, if you'd like.
If you agree. Yes. It's the previous, um, the previous officer had me draw up, literally said, put my A-two, my current A-two down. Draw, like, put it out on the window.
Alan, can you hear, oh, we should, uh, we should go through and make sure memory is there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, if, um, if something is being shown, I can't see it, um.
Oh, well, Alan will be able to see where my share.
They should be, yeah.
Okay, I can see it now.
Yeah, it should be.
So be plowed.
Yep. You know, I don't wanna interrupt Mr. Heckler's presentation as the appellant, he has the right to go first, but, um, I wanted to just explain a.
That's what I was trying to. Yeah, I turned everything.
Very bottom lane corner, right?
Yeah, this is all the way up.
That's all the way up, that is all the way up.
I can see it fine.
Just trying to speak up a little bit, for some reason it's really low on the volume. Even though ours is all the way up.
Okay.
So.
Can you hear me okay now?
It's a little loud, but, well, listen, Har.
I, I think we need, just to time out here for a photo of Michael.
Okay.
Alan Curdo is, um, representing or assisting me, pulling my hand through this, uh, hearing process, he's a little, um, in turn with, uh, Power and Sage, whether it's right down?
Yes, um, yeah, forgive me, I wanted to, um, I, I wanted to make a, a brief presentation first. Um. Before we got started, uh, normally, I, I'm, I'm subbing for Mark Brants tonight. Mark Brants sends his, sends his regards and his regrets. He was otherwise, um, otherwise detained tonight, um. And normally, we represent the town, however, in this case, because what we're doing here, this is a really a quasi judicial proceeding where the ZBA is hearing an appeal of a denied application. So in this, in this instance, the ZBA is acting as an adjudicator. And under these circumstances, um, the, what, who I'm representing is the, the zoning agent, Wayne Casasik. So, uh, I can't really provide legal advice tonight to the ZBA. I suppose I can answer a procedural question, but, but I can't act tonight as the, as the ZBA's lawyer.
We understand that, we had that conversation earlier.
Okay, very good. I just, I just wanted to make sure it was clear.
Right, but we could ask you questions if we had to.
Yeah, well, a procedural one, I can't give you legal advice, um.
Legal advice, I understand that, yeah, I had that conversation, uh, with Wayne and Eric and we were offered the opportunity to bring in our own lawyer, but we refused it, so. Okay.
All right, so, Alan, do you want, want me to, to go from here?
I can do, if you like, Wayne, I can, um, I, I can make a presentation or, or you can give your presentation and then I can fill in the blanks or add whatever I want. It's, uh, add whatever you'd like, it's up to you.
I was, I was gonna give Michael an opportunity to explain the, the plot plan here that you submitted. Sure.
Yeah, that's fine, I don't wanna interrupt the, uh, I don't wanna interrupt, interrupt the, uh, the applicant's presentation, I just wanted to make that procedural point, just so we're clear going forward. I apologize for, for breaking up the, uh, the presentation.
Good, understood. We broke their point, wasn't you yet? So this plot plan is, I literally put it on my window, right over the existing A-two I own on my property. And this is my house. This is the proposed addition, we can say. This is my existing garage, my existing driveway, the existing Eastman that the town put in, uh, years ago for the bus. Um, now, everything here is one hundred percent to scale based off of literally the A-two survey. He asked, uh, the original, I can't remember his name, Wayne, what was, what was the guy before you?
Jim.
Jim. Jim asked me to add a few things on here, you know, my leach fields, the square, um, the, the footage from my house, um, my septic. Well, basic things, updated setbacks, because setback, setbacks have changed, the, the understandings have changed since two thousand two when my, or two thousand, September of two thousand when my A-two was submitted, submitted to the town for building. And, uh, everything here is within legal standing. And also, it shows how my addition would be attached to my house, making it part of the principal property. Um. Now, essentially, Jim had stated that it would be acceptable at this point, this, this point. Uh, considering burn, uh, building, burn, save this, this whole topographic map, you need to be able to use any of that for building foundation anyways. For at least getting this far, it'd be okay to present. Now, I understand I have to go out of my way, get a, get a survey or something, that's, that's all, it's fine. But if I had known that the, that, um, Mr. Brant said, had stipulated this, I would have gone and done this, that February from the original correspondence was, was sent to Jim and I never received. So I was in the dark until literally two weeks ago, kinda seen a little into this, essentially. Um, so I had very short time to be able to find a surveyor and it's pretty hard to find a surveyor this time of year within two weeks. So, um, I tried to find the original surveyor who did my property, but he passed away in two thousand twice. So we heard, uh, out of East town, passed away. It's another company down in New Haven that bought them out. Currently, we're trying to find all the paperwork, so we need to do a revision. Cause that's all they'll need to do to add this to it. Um, but currently, I am as that one, we're here. So that's, this is why this should be okay enough to get me through this stage. Not for the next one, obviously, just this stage. Um, with full understanding that I need to get a permit for a actual or a survey, a full survey for what I'm doing. Cause I mean, you bring up, you see, you can't just build some, something on that, it's limited.
Right, it's my understanding that if the committee commission, uh, grants the relief, you know, then then he'll have to continue with his application. Essentially. Bernie, Kurt almost corrected me, but that's my understanding.
I'm sorry, I, that last bit dropped out, um. Uh, could you repeat it?
That, uh, essentially that what, um, Michael is going through right now is, uh, trying to obtain relief from the decision to deny the permit to build the garage. Should the commission here, uh, provide relief to Michael, he still would have to jump through the hoops concerning an A-two survey and all that good stuff in order to get the final permit to construct the garage, which I could lie with.
Yeah, let me, um, that's, um, is the applicant all done? I don't wanna cut him off.
Uh, I, I'm, I'm okay for that.
Okay, uh, this might be, um, Wayne, this might be a good point for me to jump in, because I think there's a couple of things here that I think I can clarify, hopefully, and, and maybe it'll help explain this. So procedurally, what, what this was, was an application for a certificate of zoning compliance in the Andover Lake zoning district. In other words, this is a administrative type approval that Mr. Heckler was, um, requesting. And basically, uh, all that approval would say is that, yes, you meet the dimensional requirements of the zoning regulations, you know, the setbacks, the, the coverage, all that sort of thing, so that he can get a building permit. And part of the, um, part of the requirements for an administrative permit is a, is an A-two survey. And as, as Mark Brant's correctly pointed out, um, there was no A, A-two survey done. Now, um, I know that the requirement for an A-two survey among zoning com- uh, commissions generally is a requirement that sometimes honored more in the breach and that I know sometimes, uh, you know, that, that, that requirement is sometimes treated with a, with a wink and a blink and a nod. However, in this particular case, I think Mark was correct that you really need an A-two survey, if for no other reason than, you know, if you're talking about an administrative zoning permit for a, for a shed or a, or a swimming pool, you know, a small swimming pool, that's one thing. I mean, we're talking here about a twenty-seven by thirty-nine foot building that's larger than a lot of houses to be added to an existing house. So I, I think in this, in this particular case, an A-two survey is, is, would be a proper thing to require. But even assuming for a moment that we had a proper A-two survey here, there's, there's a, there's a, another, and I think more fundamental problem with this application. And again, it being an application simply for an administrative zoning permit. And that is, is that we're talking about a, a, a quite large building, which even if you don't count, even if you don't count the, the upper floor, which I think in this case it's proper to count the upper floor, because the upper floor is storage. Um, Mr. Heckler said it's not considered living space, well, fair enough, but this isn't intended to be living space, it's intended to be space in a garage. So I think it's proper to consider both the upper and the lower floors as, um, as properly counted within the dimensions of the building. So if you do that, you're talking about a sixteen hundred fifty roughly square foot garage. And if you, and if you add the, the old garage, which I guess is going to be connected to this in some way, you're up to, not, not connected physically, but connected as far as use, you're up to almost twenty-two hundred square feet. So you've got, you've got a sixteen hundred fifty square foot garage to be constructed and other space that's currently a garage that's being converted to some sort of space associated with this business. You're talking about twenty-two hundred square feet. The house itself is only sixteen hundred twenty-five feet. So you're talking about adding space, which is going to be used for a business um, that's larger than the house. So that, that raises, that raises a, a big red flag to me. And the red flag is, what you're talking about here is an accessory use, I guess. An accessory use, you know, um, an accessory use has to be uh, customarily incidental and subordinate to the principal use. Now, what, what I think Mr. Heckler is proposing is he basically wants to run his business out of his house. And, you know, and it's, and it's a fairly substantial enterprise. He wants to put, um, heavy equipment. I, I don't know exactly what kind of equipment he's talking about. Uh, Wayne and I spoke this morning, he was talking about a dump truck and a small excavator, which I assume would have to be transported on a trailer. When you talk about an accessory use, it has to be, one, as I said, subordinate and typically used, you know, by a residential building. Now, what do you want, what do I mean by that? An accessory use could be a basketball court, an accessory use could be a swimming pool. Um, your regulations don't get into specifics of what can and cannot be a accessory use, but we all kind of know what they are. A barbecue pit, a deck. Um, interestingly, a lot of things that are permitted accessory uses would not be, would not be allowed on a vacant lot. Because then all of a sudden, you're not talking about an accessory use. Let's say, for example, I had this case in another town. Someone had a piece of vacant property that he owned and he wanted to put a basketball court on it for his kids. Well, the problem was, he didn't have a house on the property. And so the basketball court would, would become the principal use of the property. And in that town, you could not have a basketball court on a vacant piece of property, because then it would become the principal use. And I, and I raised that example just to show the, the difference and the contrast between a principal use and an accessory use. A lot of towns only permit one principal use per parcel of property. And, uh, in this case, the principal use is the residential dwelling. So you can have a garage as an accessory building of up to two bays as a, as an accessory use. But, um, you know, we're talking about a, a two-car garage for two cars, two motor vehicles, two, two automobiles, two SUVs, you know, a pickup truck would be okay. But that's all. Um, basically, if, if you were to prove this application, you would be basically putting two principal uses on that lot. A residential, residential home and a, and a business, essentially. Now, there are, uh, there are, uh, ways under your regulations that you can do that. Um, I know that there's, that there's special permit and site plan applications that can be made. I don't know, because I didn't look at that question, because that's not the, uh, that's not the situation we have here. But I know there are ways to, to apply for a business use on a property, but it has to be done by either a special permit or a site plan, from what little reading I did on those scenarios. So, you know, the, you know, the two problems here are the lack of the A-two survey, but the more fundamental problem is that, given, given the size of the building and its intended purpose, it raises the question of whether it's a proper accessory use for a residential neighborhood. And that means that it can't be out of scale with the rest of the neighborhood as far as, as noise, as far as visual intrusions, as far as, uh, you know, anything, anything detrimental to the character of that residential neighborhood. And I can think off the top of my head, if you've got, if you've got, uh, heavy machinery being backed in and backed out of this thing, if you've got dump trucks coming and going, you know, that raises issues as to whether, serious questions as to whether this is a proper accessory use. I will say that I agree with Mr. Heckler on one thing, and that is that the proposed garage is not an accessory building. It clearly isn't, because it's connected to and it shares at least one wall with the main residence. So no question, it's not an accessory building. But under the, under the regulations, under the application that Mr. Heckler made, the only way you could approve this, even if you had a perfect A-two survey, is that this, this proposed construction is an accessory use. And I, and I think it's, you know, I, you would have to go by what's customarily approved as accessory uses in the town, because you've got a lot of leeway under the regulations as far as what constitutes an accessory use. But in, in, uh, in Mark's conversations and my conversation with Wayne, this is something that's clearly out of scale uh, for an accessory use for a residential property, which is really the fundamental problem with this. This app, this, this application for a certificate of zoning compliance does not give, it, it doesn't give the town, under the planning and zoning commission in the first instance, you know, sufficient input into how this thing would be run and, um, you know, what kind of conditions you might wanna put on that, were they of a mind to approve it? But again, I don't wanna go too far down that road, because that's not the situation we're talking about tonight. We're simply talking about a denied permit for a certificate of zoning compliance for what, for what I would call an accessory use. And, and, and I think the denial under that particular, you know, box that we're trying to put it in, certificate of zoning compliance slash accessory use is, is not a box that this thing fits in. I mean, basically zoning is a, is an inquiry to discover what box do you put a use in? Zoning is about the use of property. One other thing I, I'll mention too, is that I, I know Mr. Heckler talked about a hardship, um, you know, he's concerned about his property, understandably. Uh, you know, he doesn't wanna, he doesn't wanna pay, you know, expensive storage fees for his equipment. He's worried about theft, he's worried about weather effects. That, those are all, those are all legitimate concerns for a business owner. However, um, talking about that stuff kind of conflates this with an application for a variance. And he didn't apply for a variance. And frankly, if he did apply, apply for a variance, you know, claiming those things as his hardships, I'm, I'm, don't think it would be properly, uh, granted to him. Again, that's not the situation we're in tonight. Uh, the situation we're in tonight is to review this, uh, application for a certificate of zoning compliance. And I think that, that under the circumstances, given the size of the thing, the effective, um, the impact, the, the possible impacts on the neighborhood, it's, I think Mr. Casasik was proper in denying it as not a, not a, um, not a good accessory use.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, yeah, I wanna give my.
Oh, that's true. Yeah, but, so I have, I have some business. I'll pass it on. They clearly, they think that I would never be doing anything I don't. Um, I can handle it too, file a, uh, open occupancy, um, but it, of course. Um, but it, of course, the the spaces were were not big enough for me to be. Broad enough without any explain, so uh, I did write down my letter that I had. Which.
We're looking at the the two surveys.
Correct, correct, correct. Um, but he did mention, um, Mister Porto did mention that. The businesses being used there or the. Spaces being used as a clearly a enterprise. Which, uh, I have an office in that house, and I store it. I'm not conducting any sort of sales, I'm not conducting any sort of, I'm not. Selling topsoil out of my property, not doing anything like that. Um, so there's no actual enterprise being. Presented at my property at all. Um, other than, again, what stated storing. My, which anyone who time, I mean, we have plenty of uh, we have plenty of. Landseaters contractors that live around the lake, that are in the lake area, that have barns and whatnot, we're sure we're. Grandfather did, but I'm not grandfathering to that warehouse. They have full blown landscaping companies. Uh, I know we have um. A HVAC. Cannibal, cynical, right, right on the lake. He started three car garage. Yeah, yeah, three car garage, we'll lift inside. He hasn't been answered. So do I. I mean, he puts in side ones, some of them, he hides it, boxes in, so you know, he's still. Very understandable. It would be the same situation.
Will you have any, may I ask a question? Sorry to interrupt you. Do you have any non-resident employees coming to or from the property? So only you will be. Transporting your equipment in and out of the property?
Yep, yep, I'm a sole proprietor. I don't have, I'm not.
Do you have any employees?
No, I'm not big enough to have anyone. Um, I, you know, um. And that's really the thing, it's 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 just me. I don't have a customer coming to my house. Um, I go to that to propose folks that obviously I don't own, right above my head. It's all my office to sort, filing and keeping files.
Those, your equipment, so your your major equipment right now is uh, dump truck, trailer, excavator. And that's all currently stored outside on your property. Uh, what if your business grows?
Well, if it grows, then hopefully I'll be able to afford the actual place that I have, like, um, maybe buy a. Apple lot, but at the right house, it's not useful, and it can't become of that bigger and so on.
Because one of the one of the things in the in the zoning regulations is. You know, bringing traffic, extra traffic into a neighborhood, so say, say this is granted and. Hopefully you're successful and your business grows. How does that affect your neighborhood as your business? Propose that you might have, you know, bigger truck, bigger excavator, you know, more trucks.
I mean.
That's part of what this is about.
There's only so much you could have on a property down. If I were to get a triaxle, I wouldn't be able to fit in my property. The weight constraints, it just would send, it would not be ideal. And I think in the regulations, it says you can only keep one commercial vehicle on a property, and it has to be stored outside. These non-commercial vehicles are all under commercial vehicles.
Um. You own something over twenty five hundred GBW, so then check that that.
Commercial is twenty five nine nine nine.
Yeah, that you do that one.
I have.
What is the full time pickup truck or two?
Truck, and then I have a regular pickup truck that is under CEO, that couldn't happen at all. Um, it's not labeled as one, so we'll run out of far. But other than that, I mean. I'm not interested in buying a triaxle, I'm not interested in buying a. A lowboy fifty foot trailer and keeping it out, it's a completely red. Another issue is, I I did change the floor plan to a. Non-secondary, if that would change.
There's there's also a proposal about repairing, I was not sure if that, if that's refers to like. An auto repair shop or? If I'm not sure how that, look, this people.
Anyone that has like, I mean, an excavator or landscaping equipment like little lawn mower or. I can saw, you need to be able to repair them. You need to be able to keep little inventories.
Yeah, I understand why that. There is a thing in here says not involved repairing any.
And it's cited on the regulations?
Yeah, so I'm not sure how you're.
Yeah, it's not on repairs.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But you know, how that, it's obvious you've got to maintain your, your equipment, but. So how that, how that fits into here, okay.
And he did point out that I did not apply for a variance. Um, but I believe I, I forgot off the top of my head, I did fill out the variance area as well. Because I did put the hardships in there. You wouldn't need to put hardships if you weren't applying for the variance, but you can only check one box at the beginning. I would have checked both, but you're not allowed to. Uh, I wanted to not only correct the issues with the uh. The zoning decisions on the line, the regulations that they were being used against. As well as obviously my hardship. So technically, we could be prepared using the variance right now, but you only qualify for one.
I think that also as a, I mean, I'm a little honest, so probably here about sending section to not have a question of variance yet.
So.
How tall is the proposed garage? Because there's a twenty foot, don't put that in there.
Certain thirteen plus one.
Right, but it's the.
The um. It's not.
It's it's not fully, that's the thing, it's it's not done yet. It's just proposed, it's not full. Yeah, we currently get it more detailed, so.
Yes, yeah, so.
For, I was thinking that those things would be ironed out later.
Yeah, yeah.
If we get it, that's.
That usually goes on during the building.
Because it says, or that's rule, the height of the building.
Oh, right, okay. Yeah, because it it accessory buildings have to meet a certain standard for like.
Same building, is it, is a height, is building height limited down?
Yeah, it's like what thirty?
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet. Which this is, I believe it was like twenty six, I want to say, but that's again proposed, that's just a. A standard pitch, that's not an ample, which could have been paid into. Again, and that's, this is just a rough draft.
Well. What I would, what I would say in response is just to reemphasize a couple of the points I made before. There are ways to accommodate. Commercial vehicles and a a lot of the other things that uh Mister Heckler wants to do. Uh, under the zoning regulations, however. Those those routes involve either site plan review or special permit review. Which means, of course, that you can put uh, or those, the Planning and Zoning Commission can put whatever conditions. Um, and specifications in its approval, should it approve it. That, you know, can can kind of control it. Um, you know, in this case. Again, what we're talking about was a was an application for a certificate of zoning compliance, and I I think. You know, for for this particular application, you're trying to put a. Trying to put us a square peg in a round hole. Another point that Attorney Brants made in um, his his email to Mister Kasasik um. Was that, you know, there wasn't enough specificity. Especially as to the the current garage, exactly what was going to go on there. Um, you know. Attorney Brands had questions about, well, he's going to repair, what's he going to repair? As was noted. You're not supposed to repair repair equipment as as part of a home business or a home occupation. Um, you know, those are the kind of things that can be controlled. Or that can be explored in either a site plan or a special permit application. For for these, for these particular facts under this particular application. There, there's not enough oversight, and there's also the question of whether it even fits, even if you could give it oversight. As far as whether it's, you know, the appropriate scale, the appropriate um. You know, level of intrusion into the neighborhood, so, you know, I'm I'm not. I I can't stand before you tonight and say that there's no way that uh. Mister Heckler could legally do what he's proposing to do under your regulations. There may be. I didn't explore those things with. With Wayne, because that's not the question that's before us. The question that's before us is whether the um. The the application for a certificate of zoning compliance was properly denied. And I think given the totality of of the facts and, you know, the the portions of the regulations that are relevant. I I think, I think the answer to that question is yes, it was properly denied, so. That's. That's our opinion.
By that, it's twenty feet for accessory building.
But again, it's not. Twenty feet for what, height, the height? Yeah, but that would only apply to an accessible building, which this is not. And any greater shape or form, that's part of the principal building. It's not legal, that's accessory building. It literally says on the stipulations. That attached building to the principal building by a covered walkway or having a wall in part. Common that is considered integral part of the principal structure and not an accessory building, therefore it is not accessory building. So that equates everything, the whole section, of course.
One of the things the attorney brought up was accessory use as well.
Section seven. That's in that. It's not there, it's it's in, it's back on the website. Seven sections. Yep, that one. So remember, this is in the Lake District, so this is, now if you go scroll down, please. Uh, permitted, right there, right there, that's permitted uses in the Lake District. Garage number seven, section seven, zero point three. Garage that's accessory use for no more than two motor vehicles.
One dump truck, one pickup truck. Heavy equipment are not considered motor vehicles. They don't have any sort of plates on them. A trailer is not a motor vehicle. But a trailer is a, it's not a motor vehicle, doesn't have motor.
I I understand you just said it's not a motor vehicle, just it doesn't have a plate on it. Have you quit me? Trailer does, does have, it's a registered.
Yes.
So the excavator is not going inside.
It can. Yes, there can go inside. It's idle, just sort of. Little gravel road, it's not a motor vehicle by any service. So I think right now.
Well, can you bring up my memo? The very last one.
The town technically states a motor vehicle as a, as the attorney's slogan, a car, SUV, pickup truck. That's your typical motor vehicle.
There's only?
Uh, no, the wood, we have at the bottom.
Oh, no.
The portly, yeah, yellow ones. So, I hope you guys have got me better, see me. Um, this is my memo to the board. So this is actually version two of this memo, um, because Mister Heckler applied for a uh. Home occupation, so I revised the memo to reflect that. When you, I I revised my mid, original memo to reflect his application for home occupation permit. Which is so. So, uh, if you want to scroll down to the discussion. I believe, uh, as far as the site plan provided, it's concerned, that. There's enough information in that drawing that Mister Heckler provided to understand the placement of the uh. New structure along with the existing garage and the um, existing residents. It does meet the setback requirements in the Lake District. As far as distance from the central land of the road and sidelines. Scroll down a little bit more, uh, right there, well, in the very last sentence, uh. I I believe that this proceeding, uh, should be, uh, should the decision be reversed. Uh, to pave the way, uh, to continue with the planning and zoning application that. Mister Heckler originally. So that was denied. In his application, um, Mister Heckler, you know, he stated that that. This landscaping equipment, excavator are incidental to his residential use. That he uh, uses the residence as the, as a home office. The appeal. Is. In my view, uh, largely based upon the economic. What's what's the word, uh? Attorney, uh, for the 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 economic hardship.
Oh, hardship, hardship, yeah.
In my reading of, uh, the relevant statutes, is not. Is 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 not, uh, cannot be considered. It's it's not a sole, it's not the sole basis for granting, really.
Yeah, but what basically, what I understand is, in your case, you're creating the economic hardship. And then it wasn't placed on you by the town, created by having all this expensive equipment that needs to be stored somewhere. Having business, so that's the way I read it, is if the applicant created a hardship, the financial hardship, then it's not a hardship. But the problem is, the town is getting more and more stable. No, I I'm not, I'm not denying, I'm not, I'm just saying, I'm trying to add clarity to what you were talking about, which is financial hardship. And if the applicant creates the financial hardship, it's not considered hardship that we take into consideration.
Yeah, and I would add that more fundamentally, this isn't an application for a variance. This is a, this is an appeal of a denial of a of a zoning certificate, so, you know, it's, I mean, at some point. You know, we could have that conversation should it become relevant, but um, even. Even leaving aside the question of what's a proper hardship to grant a variance, and the courts have gotten. A lot, a lot more stringent in the last seven, eight years or so as to what constitutes a proper hardship to grant a variance. It's it's really beside the point, because that's not the question that's here before us tonight. Because this isn't a, this isn't a variance application.
So it's not actually, we're not looking for a unique hardship, we're only looking for, that's what we used to hear.
Yeah, I I just added it just in case it needed to be said.
Yeah. So this is a bit of a new case for this board as well.
So that's my. Opinion on 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 this matter, is that the uh. Application was was, it was probably denied. Whether whether or not there's another path forward by behalf of to explore with with Mister Heckler. And uh, you know, looking at household. And, uh, you know, looking in hindsight. So I think as, right now, I, I don't believe that that's part of the consideration there.
So it, we did, and one of the key things that was clear, talked about was the size or the, uh. If you compare the living structure compared to the accessory, the accessory is much larger or a larger proportion to the. Living structure set.
My, my, I, when, um, so I brought that up, I quickly went through the regulations. I cannot find anything in our regulations that talks about the size of a accessory structure or anything that appears in the precedents.
Mr. Kieran talked about that, I must assure.
Right, yeah, Mr. Kirk, uh, Alan, um. When you were talking about the size of the structure, this structure is compared to the. Residents, I don't believe there's anything in our regulations that specifies, um. That restricts the size of an accessory structure per se.
I, I didn't find anything either, but to, to repeat something I said a while ago. This, the application is not for an accessory structure, it's for an accessory use because. Because the, the, the new construction would be integral and, and connected to the. The residential property, so it's not an accessory structure. It's not a shed. You know, a, a, a separate, a separate building. So, you know, I, I think that the question, again, there's a lot of things that don't apply here and I think. Another thing that doesn't apply is the whole concept of whether or not this is a proper accessory structure because it isn't one under the regulations. It gets back, it get, it, it gets back to the definition of what's an accessory use. And excuse me if I could just check my notes here. It's a use customarily incidental and subordinate to the principal use. So. That's, that's the standard that you have to apply. And the question is whether as a, a construction that's at, at least this, the same size or larger than the house. Uh, for, for the storage of, uh, either heavy equipment or, um, a dump truck. Is a, is a proper, is a proper accessory use. Now, I know that motor vehicle, uh, something I probably should have mentioned earlier. I couldn't find a definition for motor vehicle, but the regulations do make a distinction between. Motor vehicles and commercial vehicles and there's, there's some weight limitations and. And other things that apply to commercial vehicles. So I, I, even though motor vehicle is not defined, I think. I think it's a fair statement to make that a motor vehicle, even though it's not defined in the regulations means. The types of vehicles that I, I mentioned earlier and because it talk, the regulations talk about commercial vehicles. You know, what, what the applicant is proposing to store there doesn't really fit into the. Definition of motor, well, into the concept of motor vehicles under the regulation, which is why I think. You know, the accessory garage for, for, for no more than two motor vehicles isn't a hook into this either.
And the thing with commercial vehicles, like you said, it has to be under a certain weight. That's for anything. You can't have a hundred thousand pounds on that road on an island. Somebody too heavy for it. So that's why we have a safe loss. I, I, I've seen you older and work for the DOT. I love all of this stuff. Um, you know, when it comes to a commercial vehicle. You have to, in our regulations here, uh, you have to abide by a certain way. You can't put, can't just be outside of it. You have to leave it in a certain space for no longer than a certain amount of time. If it's not, I think if it's not like, um, if it's like a, uh, like you're building something, you won't have it there for. That's why proposing it to putting a garage, keeping it out of. You know, keeping it on a concrete floor with higher weight rating, asphalt or dirt. You know, God forbid it dures oil. You don't want that or your soil, you know, you don't want that stinger. You're better off staying in your concrete than you are ruining, you know, any, uh, same thing with that space. Things always sleep. I mean, you can't have a piece of heavy equipment and it's anything defined at a thousand pounds. So my main excavator weighs eleven thousand pounds. It's not heavy, but they still equal use. I don't want my soil to be at low use or anyone's soil to be at low use. I'd like people to be inside and it's nicer when it's on a piece of concrete to see if it is dirt or something. That I can fix it right away, so I'm not contaminated, you know, and you can see it, you can see it, you know, and, and. Having it out of. Out of sight and out of mind. It's like, it's an integrity thing. Integrity is what. What is, integrity is what's being, what's being done behind closed walls. Like you. You don't want. Something sitting out in the open, rotting away, making your property, your neighbor's properties lower value. Hiding it, keeping it in a secure spot. It's not going to make any more noise inside than it is outside. It's not going to make any more noise than dirt bikes going up and down the road or the blocks we have all over the place, kids. You know, we have a bunch of muscle cars and not a lot is around here. So it's not making any more noise, trust me, than anything. This garage has been, my, my two car garage has been a haven for the little kids. You know, I, I have my neighbors who are scared, um, who are saying that.
They learn a lot about working on cars and even working on their own stuff. It's just, it's a, it's an asset to the community. I don't know what all the goings on outside, but for sure, it's, uh, as, as over, I don't like looking at all that crap. And as, I see, I would love to go up there and just loo, wander, drive away, you know, but. He puts it in the safe spot, he's got a point, it's safe, it's out of their play, it's out of their minds, sorry. And realistically, this guy's a great neighbor, he's taught my kids and my stepkids. So much about just doing their own thing, now that's their hobby. I don't, I got, I got nothing for, um, um, completely honest side.
I mean, I, I, I love to, I love to tinker, I mean, you stopped by today. I was tinkering on some stuff and I was, I mean, I love muscle cars, I love cars, you know, uh. So having kids around, you know, teaching my work on their bikes, using my old gun guard, something like that, like. Not as a business or anything like that, but just as a little hobby, um. It, it not only keeps the kids of the neighborhood out of trouble, which is all what we want, especially not always. But, you know, I believe it's helping the neighborhood. I mean, all my neighbors, if they have questions about stuff or. You know, uh, you know, they, it was their highest priority to prepare the road for us. Because our, our road past my house is basically a private road that the town doesn't provide any sort of help. I started that, I just dropped all kinds of money into the lyrics. We had a really bad rain down, I had to use my meaning to even make it so that the dry lines. And it didn't do a heck of a lot, but it helped so that we can strive on the road. Because the town, so I'll do anything for long, so you have to rap.
And another thing, there's nothing else going in up there, ever. Nobody can build anything anymore, anywhere. So all the people around him are good with what he wants to do, but.
Still, we are a little. The dead end road, it's not like it's randomly, nobody passed by my house just on chance. They use, they literally use the east end to come around and go back down the road and maybe go on that.
The most traffic you see is the school.
Yes. You know, we're certainly happy to. Literally give up about forty or fifty feet of my property, so it's a little less good, because then it's my garage. It's easier out of town, the town drops to, to plow it back a little today. It's just that, ever since I moved in, I've had nothing but helpful and flying with the town. I, I want nothing more than to make this go as smoothly and easily as possible. That's, that's why I've been just trying to do everything the way. Someone wants, I'm not jumping to, you know, beat anyone out, I'm, I'm literally. Just asking for a little assistance sometimes, you know, I'm new to this type of thing, thirty years old, I'm not, you know. Nuts, some, some crazy big, you know, entrepreneur or anything like that, you know, I, I don't have any sort of. Understanding on this stuff other than what I'm learning here today and what I've learned through this whole process. So. You know, I'm sure there's a safe side of it. I think, and I'm correct, that's, that's what we're here for now and that's what I plan on doing for the future.
I don't think we have to do a session, um, the session is what he, it's probably, it's on the nerve matters concerning like.
Personnel.
Yeah, personnel, things like that in general. So.
Well, let's hope the period is closed.
We need a little bit of session, right, or we can't, exactly a session.
And then.
Well, no, we have to, we have to close the regular session unless.
I, I don't want to cut you guys short, but I wanted to watch your video course, but anything, whatever you, you would say.
So is there anything else before we close the break of session and move into the break of, to, uh. Into the call department for the application, uh, or continue the hearing.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that all, that all the questions that were asked or need to be asked were asked and that I could answer them to the best my ability. If there's nothing more than I, I want to offer.
So again, uh, I believe that, um, the denial of the, um, certificate of zoning compliance. Um, was proper, um, like I said before, if there's another path forward. Be more than willing. To look at that. Whether or not, uh, this can be done through a special permit application. It already has the application in, you know, also needs to do this, and that application. Go forward with training and drawing and.
So if we deny this tonight, he could still.
He can, uh, uh, attorney Kirk, if, if this, if relief is denied tonight, uh, Mr. Heckler can still. He's, uh, presumably, uh, move forward, uh, with a special permit application, correct? If, if the regulations do. Uh, allow that.
Well, I think as a matter of Wayne, jump in here if you disagree, but, um, you know, he would. Yeah, he wouldn't be precluded from if, if it was just a matter that he hadn't chosen the, uh, proper. Procedure to, to proceed. I mean, generally if a. Generally, if, if a zoning, you see, in this case, all it is is an administrative permit. You're just saying that administrative permit just says, yeah, you meet the zoning regs. There aren't typically any conditions attached or any inquiries that are made or statement of use or anything like that. Um, so if, if you were to uphold the denial of the, the zoning permit. You know, I, I don't think it would preclude an application, you know, after, you know, proper, you know, consultation with Wayne. And whether it makes sense and, um. I, it wouldn't preclude him coming back under a, a separate procedure where the Planning and Zoning Commission would have the opportunity. To review it under all the standards and the regulations that apply to a special permit. Or a, or is, or a, uh, site plan approval. So. All, all you're voting on tonight is the, is the denial, is whether to, um. Whether to grant or, uh, deny the appeal of the zoning, of the denial of the zoning permit.
What I'm understanding is essentially we jumped the gun and we're out of way too much information. Or, or the zoning portion, but you're, so essentially all I'm asking is just to get through the zoning part. So we could get to the real, you know, the real part.
How do you click there, right? It's one of the things happening up here is the attorney and, and, and Wayne brought up is. Whether the use of your, your, your new garage, whether that's. You know, whether it's subordinate to use of your residence, right? So you, you have a residential property. Yeah, so if you put this garage on there and, and have your equipment and have all that stuff in there, does it become a. A residential house attached to this garage, which is why the reason of the size of the garage becomes an issue. And or is it a garage that happens to be attached to your house where you store your, where you store your car?
And I understand this, I mean, obviously it's, again, that comes back to like what I'm used to garage for.
Right.
You know, I'm not, let's just say, um, I were a, a wood shop or a woodworker. I'm not building, um. Furniture or, or little sheds or something out of it, where I can just happen to live outside.
Your work is all done offsite.
So it's, it's essentially this, just so it's like you would have a lawn or, or you have. Anything garage, it's essentially just bigger toys.
Well, the storage of commercial equipment, yes, it's a little different than just storage of your lawnmower.
Correct.
Yeah, because you're not, you're not using this stuff, this is not for use on your, on your properties for use.
Right, yeah, and of course, I, I have two acres, so I could be happy if you sit on my property if I didn't have a. If I had more time to gather or, or hours a day.
Right, but it's primary usage for your, for your, for your business.
And, and when we spoke the first time, I don't think you were there yet, but I spoke to Jim and it actually was my primary use, was on the property. But I started getting more and more interested in people using me for all the study things and then I had to. Make it full on up, so, yeah. That's where things kind of changed a little bit and understanding kind of changed of the.
Well, it, it does go, or is it possible to say that, uh, rent to.
We're talking about, probably ten thousand dollars. Really? Yes, for something that, okay, is like this, most people, and, yeah, we're, we're talking like ten thousand dollars. And I don't know if you guys, that's a lot, there's orange water in here. It's a lot, and I could build a garage for that much. I have it for forty years, so I need a roof, like. Yeah, it's just my car. Yeah.
Grouping. Real street construction, okay.
So, I mean. It's, it's, it boils down to, that's why the, it came down to, um, we're talking about, uh. Hardship. Ten thousand dollars, it's a lot for a lot of people. And I get it, it's an astronomical.
You can't take that.
And it, it does say, it does say hardship and it doesn't really go into it very, very much, the regulations, so.
Yeah, the stickler is unique.
A unique hardship and it's not a financial, especially when you're well known by the government.
Yeah, it's actually a pretty high one. So what is. I guess what, what involves a unique hardship, you know.
Yeah, you know, but that's not even what we're talking about.
The next step, yeah, exactly. If you need a variance, but this, i- if, if this can move forward, it wouldn't need a variance because it needs to set it back for a while. Lots of pieces to hide require, then it can come by.
And since it's not a secondary use, what would be, what would be the maximum, was it thirteen that I went for the fighting for the.
Well, it's, it's a. And like, well, we.
My house is their house.
My house is pretty darn high. Right about where their house is, you know. I mean, so forty foot ladder to get up there. Yeah, I, I built my last two sets of two thousand seven, that's by dancing. Well, a two story house would be like, certainly tall house, it's got four inches over four, so. Four year house would be twenty feet plus the roof, it's plus the roof is quite tall. A three story house would be twelve feet plus the roof, plus the roof, it's tall. I'm probably, my house would be just twenty minutes, yeah.
Like, chill with him, it's garage, and, oh, we'll pay him, it's well, I'm hoping.
I mean, it's very hot.
I'm saying something, and then it's not, I'm just thinking about, we know the zoning, that's, 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 so that can be.
And that's why, yeah, that's why.
Yeah, it's a little bit.
So that's why I'm, um, the line will be to, and then we'll shut down, and then it's fine down the other, you know.
So the denial of this permit is based on that, that it's the use, is the use, the customarily incidental and subordinate to the rest of the use is the basis of the law.
It doesn't, it doesn't preclude him from moving forward.
We can show.
Correct. So, I see. All right, I think, do you have anything else you want to add, I don't want to cut you off. Is there anything else that, um, uh, Attorney Kirk, would like to ask before we close the session? Would like to add?
No, I'm fine, Wayne, you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, so, but at this point then, I'm gonna call this, uh, public, uh hearing to a close, and we will continue on with the actual, um, CBA meeting. And at this point, what I do need to do to have a forum, then to seek an alternate tonight, which is Viata.
Yeah.
Excuse me, uh, are you guys, are you guys gonna vote? Are you guys gonna vote on the, uh? Do you, do you?
We're gonna vote, I have to close the original meeting and go into the actual hearing and, uh, seek an alternate.
Oh, no, I, what I was asking is, um, so, if if you're going to make a decision to either grant the appeal or, or deny the appeal, is that something you typically vote on?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, a- and, and you're going to proceed to that?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Uh, so the other thing I would just say to you is, we only have a board of five people. Uh, you have to have four guesses to move this forward, so you only have four people tonight. If you wanted to, you could always delay action, you know, you could come back and we could have you can take a roll, nice that we could have Dave Hewitt here, who's a full seat, we have five people seated, and you don't have to get four or five, instead of four and four, not just throw that out there, it's one of those.
I think that's weird how that works.
Yeah, it's very weird.
One doesn't exclude one, you're not free.
Yeah, yeah, but it's, it, it does, I guess, that's, I didn't make those up, just.
Yep.
It's a lot of the laws.
Regulations are regulations.
Regulations, right, so, you know, it's your odds, I guess, it's either five or four, five, or four, or.
Yes.
Not, not a gamble, okay, I'll say it where it is. Uh, so on a closer meeting, and, uh, so I made a motion to seat, uh, Viata as our alternate tonight, uh, any second to that, Fred, any discussion? All is in favor, or, or, uh, or, or, okay, great, um. So, at this point, let's re-read the motion that is, uh, or the application that's, uh, in front of us, um. Oh, I'm sorry, I should actually do that, is there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Especially with, so I'm just.
I don't think there's actually, yeah, would be, although it's on the agenda, I mean, it is on the agenda. You're, you're bad, and, and public speak, so, really had our public speak, and I think you really had your chance at the public speaking list. There's any other you want to say?
Oh, good, thank you, Jeff.
Um, good, so we will, uh, again, we're discussing the application twenty twenty five oh two, Mike Pecker, seventy one Masala Road, and an anniversary from a denial of zoning permit by the end of the zoning agent. So somebody's after was denied the zoning permit to construct a two car garage instead of a storage and landscape equipment, a dump truck, an excavator attached to a dwelling, and existed two car garages supposed to be converted into a workshop space. Um, so at this time, I will entertain a motion.
Best denial.
Well, yeah, she says deny, yeah. Overruled, yeah. So, again, okay, deny the zoning permit by the inter. Uh, do I have a second on that, I'll say that. Second by Fred, um, discussion.
Um, I do think, and I support your idea, and you know, running, you know, storing your current somewhere, I'm fully on board with that. Um, but I, I just think the law and, and the, uh, the argument by our zoning agent, I think they're right on, and I think we gotta, gotta find some other way, way to do this. You know, the, the accessory use of the building, the subordinate, it, I don't think it, it's no longer subordinate to the residential use of the property the way, the way we want it to. Um, and I do have some concerns about the residential nature of the neighborhood, and I, I know there large vehicles going through there and all that, but, uh, with, with doing that, doing that out there, so, I'm hoping it's a balance.
Yeah, and that, all I would ask is, obviously, the citizens on the zone, and, and I think you have to get that from Wayne, um, and, and I, I agree with most of your arguments as well, the truth, uh, through the line, with the exception of the one piece, which is subordinate use, um, so, is there any discretion, yeah?
We have to follow the law.
Yeah, no, yeah.
And, and getting past that.
Yeah, it's a true, it's not a shot.
Get onto your, your process, so, anyways, and that's what kind of helped my decision, what we have going there.
It's helping me make my decision too, because it doesn't stop your process there, so, any other discussion that we Fred?
No.
Yeah, then, in that case, um, I'll call and coast the vote, and all is in favor of the motion to deny, or say aye. But, I, all is opposed, all opposed, abstain. And so, again, good luck, I, to you, best luck, I do agree with everything you really had to say about as far as the building, you know, leaking. Um, I, I know a lot of people have, they've, they've put that too, and a good friend of mine worked at my house in the day. A little of those, tons of like, all I just, just really all clear, I, I get it, and I wish you the best of luck, cause I, I really do, but I think I'd have to go with our lawyer and our, uh, zoning agents.
Remember, he's not your lawyer.
He's not your lawyer, he, he's the town's lawyer in this case, and I'm just, built that, I could have hired my own lawyer, if I, if I, I'm, I'm. Anyways, but I do wish.
Yes.
Well, I hope you, I hope it's something.
I, I think, I think you made something work.
Changes to the application will make this a lot smoother for you, so hopefully we'll get that done.
Yeah. And if I'm people else, yeah, definitely.
But.
Here again, so. And, um. And, do you have one of the most? Thank you, Kirk.
Yes.
Uh, so, in that case, then the next, uh, piece of this would, yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Kirk, uh, appreciate your help tonight.
Oh, glad to do it, hope I, hope I filled in properly for Mark, he's got some big shoes to fill.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, so we're just moving on to the reg, to the regular mundane business.
Okay, I'll, I'll bow out, thanks a lot, folks.
Um.
And good, and good luck, Mr. Heckler.
Thanks, uh, uh, is there any old business, uh, the only old business here is vacancies on the CBA, we really don't have a vacancy right now. What we have is a, does it come for? And I didn't get a chance to, you know, back to the person, I'm probably gonna wet signature on that person's, uh, sheet. Uh, so that's the only way to address this, uh, okay, oh, you're gonna, again, well, 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 well. All right, thank you, thank you, I appreciate all of you, thank you, um, so, at this time, I need, I have a little thing to work on, whether or not I'll get a wet signature of that person, that's something, yeah. I really don't look into those situations right now, I haven't seen them in quite a while, so, um
Yes.
In, in forward year, I know that at least, so I am gonna pursue, um, Colin Elo, I just been busy, so.
I think Shannon said she saw him somewhere.
Carol's, he was in Carol's, I saw him, I guess what I was gonna say, I basically saw him, and I, I could see him and ask him to go.
Oh, okay. Okay. Oh. Oh, like Carol's party, oh, I got you, it was still getting, that's, it was still getting, wow, uh, so then I would
He's there, yeah, he was there.
Like to adopt a minister, uh, I'm wondering, can we do that with just three people, I think we can, right? So, uh, I know we review those ministers, I have Kathleen and Fred, uh, from the January meeting, um, I would make actually a motion to, uh, approve the ministers that.
I'll, I'll make a motion to.
And in discussion. All is favored, uh, so the ministers from the January meeting have been approved.
She would have to.
So, I said, I, yeah.
Missed things, yes.
And then, uh, miscellaneous, I don't have either miscellaneous business, I would obtain a motion to adjourn.
How much?
There we go, and, yeah, a second.
Okay.
I'll say, all right, Fred, any discussions? Like, all is favored. Thank you, people, I would say, talking, exactly, I'm, I'm, I had a hard time with, I'm actually, until
The denial, yes.
Yeah, very closely, and, and he pointed out again, it's, it's the, um, it's.